Okay, council members, we're right at 6 o'clock, so we'll start the meeting.
And for this one, prior to the selection of mayor and deputy mayor for the next two-year term, I'll go ahead and lead the pledge. Hopefully, this is not the last in-person meeting that we'll have this year, but it is the first meeting, and then immediately after this, we'll go to Zoom, back to Zoom, until we are in a place where we can meet again safely in person. So, if everybody will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Donna, will you do roll call, please?
I will.
Councilmember Bode?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Councilmember McDowell?
Present.
Councilmember Innesco?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and with that, I will introduce the nomination process for mayor. State law requires the council to select a mayor at the first meeting of the new council following an election. Any council may nominate him or herself, or another council member, for the position as mayor. Seconds are not required for nominations, and the city clerk will now open the floor
If you would like to make a nomination, please raise your hand now. Councilmembers McDowell, Gutierrez, and Bode have indicated they would like to give nominations. I will ask you each one at a time to state your nomination. Councilmember McDowell?
Councilmember Eric Innesco.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez?
I nominate Councilmember Joe Schmidt.
Thank you. And Councilmember Bode?
And I nominate Deidre Peterson.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? The floor is now closed for nominations. I will now ask each council member, one at a time, to state your vote by voice. When called upon, if you wish to vote for Councilmember Innesco, Councilmember Schmidt, or Councilmember Peterson, please state that. A single candidate must receive at least four votes to be selected as mayor. I will start with Councilmember McDowell. Please state your selection for mayor.
I have Councilmember Eric Innesco.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmidt?
Innesco.
Thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Councilmember Joe Schmidt.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Joe Schmidt.
Thank you. Councilmember Innesco?
Innesco.
Thank you. Councilmember Sherman?
Eric Innesco.
Thank you. That is four votes for Councilmember Innesco.
Yay!
And now, our newly selected mayor?
Yay!
voting down the safety process. We're going to have a vote. And you take this.
Oh, boy.
You can't throw it at anybody.
I'm going to take it away from you. You're going to play check, check, group. So here, you.
Do I go up there?
You can do it from right there, and I guess you have this right here.
Okay. Thank you.
And I will go up here, and I will keep the tally for you.
Okay, we ready?
I'm ready.
I will first ask if there is a council consensus to select a deputy mayor. I assume yes. I will open the floor for nominations. Please raise your hand if you'd like to nominate someone.
I would like to nominate Joe Schmidt.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Deidre Peterson.
Okay. Are there any more nominations? So, now we go for the vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll go for the vote for Joe Schmidt and...
Deidre Peterson.
Deidre Peterson, I'm sorry. Okay. Commissioner McDowell?
Joe Schmidt.
Joe Schmidt.
Schmidt. Thank you.
Gutierrez.
Joe Schmidt.
All right. Ms. Peterson?
Joe Schmidt.
Do we stop there?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do we stop there?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Do I do this?
Of course you do.
Read the script.
Okay.
Officially official.
Now, does the council have any late changes to the agenda? No?
No.
All right. Do we have any council reports?
I do.
Commissioner McDowell?
Who?
Our councilmember McDowell?
That's fine. I was supposed to attend the left board meeting this morning, but they got a late start at the county, so it's been postponed till tomorrow, hopefully, so I did not get to do that. Friday, I will be attending the legislative send-off at the Yacht Club. So that's always a fun event, and I think that's it for me for now.
Schmidt, you're giving me a look. You have a report?
No, I just was curious, do we have to notice? Do we have more than three attending that on Friday?
We have noticed.
We have noticed? Thank you.
Well, I haven't prepared. I haven't noticed it yet.
We will notice.
Thank you.
If there's four of you attending. Who's attending? Can we ask that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we're at...
Okay, consider it noticed.
Right. Is anybody read the consent agenda?
Actually...
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I may, I have just one item to report. I had my Peninsula Regional Transportation... I'm right behind you. My Peninsula Regional Transportation Project Organization Executive Board meeting recently, and they amended the R-TIP at that meeting, which is the regional transportation plan, to add two Shelton projects to that. So those projects are the Brockdale Road resurfacing project and the crosswalk improvements to access state funding. So I wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of that, and also to thank Ken Gill from City Staff, who sits on the technical advisory board, and forwarded that into the process.
Thank you, councilmember.
Council.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Is that okay? It's really important to attend the legislative send-off. It's a fun event, but it's because we meet our reps and our senators and whoever else, you know, and they tell us what's going to be going on in the near future, and it's just a good way to get together with other citizens and leaders of Shelton.
Yeah. I agree. Okay. Anybody else? See, I've got to look behind me.
I'll speak up.
Okay. And everybody read the consent agenda as published?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
Second?
There is a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, general public comments. Donna, do we have anybody interested in public comment tonight?
Let me go see.
And we will have a 30-second delay.
I should start that. I remember starting this.
Jeff, do we want to hit this after... Okay. Okay, I was going to say, I don't remember us doing that for a long time, but we've been in Zoom, so...
Going to put a speaker in it.
Yeah.
We have Dean Jewitt. And Dean, you have...
Dean Jewitt, Mason County, longtime resident. Welcome to City Council. Happy New Year. Congratulations, Eric, Sharon, Miguel. I want to take the opportunity to have a conversation, and I'm going to do this a little bit different than what I've done in the past, which means I'm going to kind of try to do it in a positive manner. Can you believe that? First, I want to thank you guys for the passing of the camping ordinance. I think that's going to be a step and help us in the right direction. Not everybody agreed with it. I just hope that the implementation of it will show some positive direction. I believe that downtown and Shelton community need that. I want to caution and make note of what I feel goes on in Olympia has a wave effect coming over into the Shelton community. We shut down, or they shut down a big community, a big homeless camp, you know, downtown on Deschutes, and you've probably all seen the papers and what that's caused, and what's going on with that hotel, and where they placed those in relationship to a church school, and, you know, businesses and things like that, and some of the negative impacts that has taken place. I would hope that you guys would have conversations and maybe make plans that how that's going to affect our community. As a downtown business owner, I've been pretty active in the last couple of months, offering my services into home security and camera world, and that's a standard standing offer. I've helped several businesses get those cameras set up so that we can kind of help, maybe help you guys, help Chief Beeson. My wife and I had the opportunity to sit with her and have probably a half-hour conversation, and I want to say thank you to her as well. It was a very good conversation. I believe that she heard what we had to say. I hope that the downtown coalition of businesses can make a positive impact. I feel all of you in your positions have taken time out of your day to make a positive impact in our community. So, I just would like to offer my services. What can I do? What can I do to help? I don't want to be an adversary. I'd rather be an advocate. So, what can I do to help you guys? Alls you have to do is call on me, let me know. All right? Thank you for your guys' services. We definitely appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
And is there any more public comment, Donna?
Not the best part. Hey, Eric, what time is the legislative kickoff? Is that 7:30?
7:30, I think.
7:30, okay. Are you going?
Yes, I am. I've got two different sheets here.
We all... Good. Mr. Mayor, there's no more public comment.
All right. The only business item this evening is a resolution for our local road safety program. City engineer Ken Gill has the details.
Good evening, council. Good to see you on this chilly night. So, tonight, I am a core representation for Ryan Shea. So you guys get to meet Ryan at our September study session. Ryan's a transportation planner, Shea Carjewell, that presented what we've done so far. So, local road safety plan, I'll give you a brief overview. Council has really put a lot of emphasis into solving some safety problems around town. To do that and implement that, they budgeted, you budgeted about $30,000 into our budget this year to prepare this plan, with the ultimate goal of submitting for around $35 million in grant funding that is application due this March. So, Ryan is not here tonight for a really good reason. He's got the sniffles, but he is going with his wife tonight to find out the sex of their third child. So, as the father and stepfather of seven, red or blue is very important to find out. So, I will just quickly jump in. So, for those of you who got, I see you guys all got your laptraps, you guys are all ready. This presentation starts on page, PDF page 87 of, I think there's 359 pages that Donna was graciously put all together. And then the actual road safety plan is actually in that document, and it starts on about page 71. So, I've done the slides, so we can't show it up on the screen tonight, but we're just going to do our best with what we got, okay? So, local road safety plan is a crash data-driven plan that tells us around town where people are getting hurt or where we've got fender benders. The data is provided by WashDOT through police reports. If you or I get into a fender bender, we fill out a report, and there's the special boxes you check in there. Was it daytime? Was it nighttime? Was the street well-lit? Things like that. So, what we use it for is to try to understand where we're hurting people in town, and where we, or our roads aren't as safe as they could be. In the five-year period that we looked at, we just had just under 900 crashes. Of those, 16 of them were fatal or a serious injury. So, really important to us to zero in on those ones and say, hey, what's going on at those, in those times, locations, and ultimately, those people, because we don't want that to happen anymore. So, kicking ahead in the presentation, I'm on slide 12, those, for those of you who've followed along. I'm just going to hold it up here. My kids have a program on their iPads called Drawing Carl, but they produce kind of figures that are like this, but these big purple, fat purple lines on there. Those are our corridors where we have the most concentrations of accidents. So, and Ryan is focused on those corridors, along with, it's not just this crash data, along with input that we got from council members. So, in addition to taking some input from you during our last study session, we reached out to our friends, Robert Heron, the director of the Shelton School District, and also new principal for Cedar High School there at Olympic College. Slide 13 is, talks about a couple of the projects that were derived from that, and then also have gained input from our maintenance folks. We've got some areas around town that are just inherently dangerous, they know from sweeping up taillights and things like that. Then also, just from other residents that have called in during this process and said, hey, I've got an issue here, I want you to go look at it. So, one, taking that data, that, you know, input from council, maintenance staff, high school, starts in chapter five in here, if you want to look at it. But it goes through projects that you have identified and talks about how can we make it safer? Looking ahead, there's a, your PowerPoint talks about some countermeasures, those are fixes, and I won't go into in-depth on that. At the very back of the plan, we prioritize which ones we think are the ones that we should focus on, the ones at the very top of the points where we're having some fatalities or serious injuries, those are the tier one. Lower down, a little bit, it goes, you know, where we're causing other injuries. So that's why those tiers are set up that way. Final slide talks about the next steps for us. With any luck, Ryan will be coming back here on the 18th, but what I will be asking you guys to do between now and then is, on March 4th, CD Shelton gets to submit one application, and I would be looking for you guys. What's important to you? What do you want Shelton to submit on? My recommendation to you tonight is kind of a suite of projects, ones that are supported by crash data, ones that are supported by the school district, you and our maintenance staff, and taking up, I want Shelton to get a real running start and a good shot at the $35 million that's available in this fund through our state. So, tonight, I recommend that you take this to action for your 18th council meeting, but I can answer any questions that you have, or if you have questions that you think between now and then, you can certainly ask them at the next council meeting, too. So that's all I had for presenting tonight, and I'm eager to hear your, any of your thoughts and ideas on this topic. I'm kind of passionate about it, I'm kind of excited about it, so...
Any councilors have any questions?
Yeah.
Ms. Councilor Schmidt? Deputy Mayor Schmidt?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ken, tier one, tier two, tier three. I assume what we would be submitting is whatever's in the tier one priority list, or is it all, are we picking and choosing projects, or...
I'm going to submit what we've all decided you think is more important. Certainly, I think projects that address areas where we're killing people or having serious injuries would probably be a good focus, but those are only two locations, and those two projects that you described in tier one, that's only two projects.
Right.
I want to go for more. So, you know, if the fix there is the same, you know, usually when you go out to bid, you get an economy of scale. Councilmember Peterson talked tonight about the safe routes to school. The reason why that was so successful is that it's three flashing beacons at three locations around town. So, that's what I'm trying to do, is I'm trying to put projects together so that when we go out to bid, we, you know, we're getting prices for the economy of scale. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Gal?
I didn't have a question, but a comment. Thank you for the hard work you're doing for the city. I appreciate it. And the flashers on the crosswalks, I think they're great. Safe. Better than, you know, than waiting for the light to change.
Sure.
Yeah.
Welcome. This is kind of fun, actually. I really enjoyed it, so I appreciate the comments.
But if everybody got...
Deputy Mayor?
There was one project that did stick out to me that I thought was kind of interesting I'd like to hear a little bit more about, is on tier three, the roundabout at First and Railroad. Or, excuse me, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brady?
Yeah. What would that, what would that, so that's a big, that's 4.1 million. I'm assuming a lot of that's going to be right-of-way acquisition?
So, good, good question. Question I heard was, hey, what about the roundabout proposed at First and Railroad? So, the reason why we came up with that solution there is that there's a lot of pedestrian conflicts there, and it's a signalized intersection, and one way to get pedestrians out of the intersection is to build a roundabout, kind of like we've done at First and Birch. That doesn't mean that that is the solution there. To make that the solution there, we'd get, I have to get partners with our state, because that's SR3. So, in my past life, I did that. Starts out with interchange jurisdiction report, things like that. It's a long process, but that certainly, if that's something that the council is interested in, that's certainly something that's within the realm of getting started on with this funding money, you know, seeding the preliminary study, you know, seeding the preliminary design. But certainly, I don't think this round of funding, if I asked for all of it with, for Shelton, I'd probably be looked on as greedy as my peers. So, but certainly, that's a long-term, but one way to improve the intersection safety at that is to, is to make that a roundabout.
Anyone else? I'm excited that a few of my concerns I've been talking about for four years are in the plan, which would be in front of Oakland Bay Junior High, where kids are playing Frogger with cars, and the new Mountain View School, where there's no crosswalk where the kids are crossing. Thank you for that.
And I'd like to just show my support for the Olympic Highway projects, and just for clarification, of the 16 fatal or serious injury accidents, we've had two fatalities in 14 serious injury collisions, and one of which was on Olympic Highway, long straight stretch, no refuge, point of refuge for, for anybody crossing a crosswalk, and I remember that, that car versus pedestrian, it was a very unfortunate situation, dark, dark evening like tonight, so similar weather. So I'm very supportive of pretty much anything on Olympic, Olympic Highway, as well as what was explained by the mayor, Innesco's explanation by Wallace Neeland at OBGH and the schools as well. I think that would be a good compelling case to put forth, and...
Okay.
Yeah, just wanted to show support for that.
All right. Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
A motion to put resolution number 1222-1221, local road safety plan, onto the action agenda for the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to forward resolution number 1222-1221, and the attached items for the local road safety plan to January 18th council meeting and action agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken.
All right. Now, on our action agenda, Community Development Director Mark Ziegler is going to share information about an MOU for renovations at the library, and we'll wait for him. Good evening, Mr. Ziegler.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. For a little history here, since we haven't met since December 7th, I'm bringing to you tonight a memorandum of understanding with Timberland Regional Library District for renovations of the William G. Reed Library. These renovations will all be performed by Timberland Regional Library, paid for through their budget. So, some of the renovations will include new paints, new flooring, a new circulation desk, new office space, workspace, kind of in the back area where the staff are performing their functions as well, some storage, and just reorganizing the building since it really hasn't had a, an upgrade or a change in, in those functions for many years. So this memorandum of understanding just formalizes the agreement between the city and Timberland Regional Library District, because it's not formalizing the existing contract for services. So, with your approval this evening, Timberland Regional Library District will be scheduling that work to start January 10th, and will be closed for about, almost three months while that work is underway, but they will be providing some services here at, at the Civic Center, as well as up at the YMCA for their patrons in the meantime.
Does anybody have any questions for Director Ziegler? Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, public comment?
Yes, thank you.
No public comment.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Timberland Regional Library District for renovations of the William G. Reed Library.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Our next item is a bargaining agreement with the Shelton Employees Guild. Administrative Service Director Michelle Sutherland will share her information with us.
You've heard on the TV out there, it's on its stereo.
Are my kids still out there?
I didn't know. I don't, not sure.
Figure they would escape.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. Consistent with past practice, this is an action agenda item. We completed a really successful collaborative bargaining process with the Public Works Guild, and that is the Shelton Employees Guild, which represents the full-time and part-time employees for the Public Works and Parks Department. Major changes from the previous three-year agreement include updating language for state and federal regulations that have changed, development of a new salary schedule based on market analysis of comparable cities, changing the front-loaded vacation hours to accrual process like the rest of the city uses, updating the current vacation schedule to reflect city policy, changing on-call pay to a daily rate, updating the annual clothing allowance, and adding the holiday of Juneteenth. We did have a general... We did have a general wage increase of 4% for 2022. 2023 will be 3.5% and 2024 is 3%. On-call premium pay was $40 per day and an additional medical premium contribution of $75 in each year of the agreement. Staff recommends that we move to approve the agreement between the City of Shelton and the Shelton Employees Guild, representing full-time and part-time employees in the Public Works and Parks Department, excluding supervisors, professional, confidential, and clerical employees for this period, January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2024. Did anyone have any questions regarding this bargaining agreement?
All right. Donna, has anyone signed up for public comment?
Check.
And our thirty-second delay.
No public comment.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the agreement between the City of Shelton and the Shelton Employees Guild, representing all full-time and part-time employees in the Public Works and Parks Department, excluding supervisors, professional, confidential, clerical employees for the period of January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2024.
Second.
Excuse me. We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between the City of Shelton and the Shelton Employees Guild, representing all full-time and part-time employees in the Public Works and Parks Department, excluding supervisors, professionals, confidential, and clerical employees for the period of January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. The second bargaining agreement I bring to you this evening is between the City of Shelton and the Shelton Police Guild. The major changes include, again, the state and federal updates to language, adjusting the pay schedule based on market analysis in comparable cities, updating the current vacation schedule, the clothing allowance, and adding Juneteenth as a city holiday. We bargained a general wage increase of 3% for the three-year life of the contract with a 3% one-time market increase. A shift differential pay changed from 1% to 2%. Bilingual pay was updated from $100 to $150 per pay period. The uniform allowance was updated from $1,250 to $1,550 per year and an additional HSA contribution of $150 per month. It was $100. Staff recommends that we move to approve the agreement between the City of Shelton and the Shelton Police Guild, representing all full-time and part-time employees in the Police Department, excluding supervisors, professional, confidential, and clerical employees for the period of July 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2024.
All right. Has anybody signed up for public comment? Donna's getting her exercise. Yeah, she's got her watch on. Give her some points.
No public.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the agreement between the City of Shelton and the Shelton Police Guild, representing all full-time, part-time employees in the Police Department, excluding supervisors, professional, confidential, and clerical employees for the period of January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2024.
Second.
All right. All right. Any councilmembers have any questions to make or comments? Thank you, Michelle. I know that's not easy.
And, you know, I would also like to say thank you to the Police Guild and to the Public Works Guild. We've strived to build relationships and work collaboratively, and that has really been beneficial for all city staff, so.
Thank you, Michelle, and glad that we're doing these all together now instead of pieced-mealed across the fiscal year. So, thank you very much for your work on that.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between the City of Shelton and the Shelton Police Guild, representing all full-time and part-time employees in the Police Department, excluding supervisors, professionals, confidential, and clerical employees for the period of January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Next, our city engineer, Ken Gill, will have details regarding illicit stormwater discharge.
You squeaky clean tonight, Jeff.
Welcome back.
It's good to be back. So, this is the final time you get to hear about this. You've heard about it twice already. Just as a brief background, Shelton is a Phase II municipal permittee. Our Phase II permit requires us to keep our municipal code up to date with language for illicit discharge. Illicit discharge is anything that goes into the storm sewer, storm sewer, that is not supposed to go there. Antifreeze, gasoline, all these pipes that drain directly into Goldsboro Creek, Shelton Creek, our fish-bearing streams. Shelton has an amazing resource here. Just before the holidays, you might have saw salmon spawning up Shelton Creek on the way up to, kind of there by Choice High School. So that is an amazing resource that not every city in the state of Washington has. So, this update gets us in compliance again with our permit. And I don't have anything else to present. The ordinance is part of your packet. But if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any of them.
Any questions for public comment? No? All right. Donna, have we had any public comment? Poor Donna. We said we hope you have your watch on when you were leaving last time. I like it when I'm laying on my couch and my watch says, "You've achieved your goal for the day." Go on. Did I move my arm or something?
No public comment.
Donna, may we have a second reading of ordinance number 1980-1021?
Ordinance number 1980-1021. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending Chapter 13.02 of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to illicit stormwater discharges.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 1980-1021 as presented.
A second.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1980-1021 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item is a resolution to approve a proposal for Mason Conservation District. Ken has more information.
So, once again, Shelton has a Phase II permit. One of the conditions of the permit is we do some public outreach. I am not certainly an expert on that, but we have some friends that are. So, the Mason Conservation District is providing that service countywide for many years. They propose to help Shelton out with meeting the requirements of that permit with this scope and fee. The best part about this is that ecology provides funding to pay for these services. So, I apologize that Evan Bowder and Barb Atkins couldn't be here tonight with the weather. They were here through Zoom during our last meeting when we presented it. But I am here to answer any questions about it and recommend that you approve it.
Donna, has anybody signed up for public comment? Jeff is getting a kick out of this every time you have to go out there. Maybe you should alternate.
The podium.
Oh, that's right. You do have a.
I'm just having a good time that we're all in person again.
No public comment.
Right. Donna, maybe we have a reading of resolution 1219-1121?
This is what he should be laughing at.
Resolution number 1219-1121. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, approving a scope and fee within Mason Conservation District for NPDES public education and outreach efforts and authorizing the city manager to sign a letter of acknowledgement.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I motion that we approve resolution number 1219-1121, approving Mason Conservation District's proposal for MPD as education and outreach activities as presented.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Point of order, we need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 1219-1121 as presented.
Do we have any questions or comments? I'm sorry. Thank you to Conservation District for their partnership.
Councilmember Gal.
I kind of have a comment and a question together. I think that it's really great when our city and our entities and our citizens can all come together on projects and things. Do they, is there a possibility of Conservation District partnering with citizens for small rain gardens around town in their yards? On their property, on their business property, whatever?
There is. If you look on their website, I can't tell how many they put in, but they put in several on Angle Side. And they put a couple in on Mountain View.
Okay.
So their website is the main source for that.
Okay.
Yes, that is, and it's a great partnership with, with residents and the Conservation.
It just kind of shows people that we're interested in keeping our water clean and doing it at a most efficient way, money-wise and labor-wise and whatever.
The Mason Conservation District did partner with the new mental health facility down the street. Tore quite a bit of asphalt, created a rain garden there, and shows what that group is capable of. And I think that's a really nice demonstration project close to our Civic Center.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 1219-1121 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One more item from Ken.
Last item is council acceptance of our Park Street paving project that we did just before it started raining. And that is your transportation benefit district funds in, in work, you know, working. So that's 0.2% of the sales tax. So the project, it was, it was the time to pave it. Cascadian special gas had replaced the gas main in it the summer before. So it kind of looked like a checkerboard. But we got to put some of our new asphalt over their new asphalt, and now it looks like a great road with new striping. I've gotten a lot of compliments on it. In addition to that project, while we were working on that, there were some concerned citizens in the Angle Side neighborhood up on Forest Street that had a road named 14th between Holly and Bayview that had needed some serious work for many, many years. We asked Granite Construction for a price. They gave us a very fair, and we accepted it, and they completed that work in this scope also. So the whole reason why we do this is it starts a 45-day claim clock against anyone that has any claims against the project. And it also starts the process so the contractor can his retainage back. That's the amount of money that we hold on to until all the labor is paid. So, there's a, I included the PowerPoint presentation that I gave that shows the photos during construction. I'm not going to go through those again. But that's all I had to present tonight. I recommend that you accept the project so that you can start the process for the contractor to get his retainage back.
Any public comment?
That Park Street is one of the prettiest streets in town. I love it.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then. Can we have a reading of resolution number 1214-1021?
Resolution number 1214-1021. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, accepting the Park Street overlay project as final and complete.
Right. Any questions? Or do we have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number 1214-1021 as presented.
Sorry.
Seconds?
Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions or comments? No? All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 1214-1021 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good night.
Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us about a contract with Aspect Consulting.
It's all right. If she really wanted to get me, she wouldn't have packed a back-to-back presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Harris.
Good evening, Council. Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. This delay is interesting. I sit out there and I'm 30 seconds behind everything. It's pretty interesting. Anyways, tonight I have a resolution before you for the design of the C Street landfill to close it out. So, a little bit of background. I gave a presentation at your last meeting about this. I'll be brief. We have 13.7 acres on the west side of 101. Right where C Street, the overpass goes over, that's where the landfill is sited. It was opened in 1928, and in the 80s, we closed it down. About four acres of the 13.7 acre site has some contamination in it. And in 2016, we entered an agreed order with the state and hired Aspect Consulting at that time to prepare, to prepare an investigation study and the draft cleanup plan. And the draft cleanup plan was completed. It was reviewed by the state. And then it was released to the public for public comments. The public comment period ended in December, and there was really no changes to the draft plan, which was good. And in the meantime, Aspect prepared a proposal for the, to follow that cleanup plan, to actually design construction plans for it. And we received a grant of $815,000 from the state for the design work. We have to do a 25% match on that. About $500,000 of the $815,000 remains. We also received a second grant for $1.2 million with a $300,000 city match that will be combined with the remaining grant funds and for the final design and construction of the improvements. And the construction cost is estimated at about $2 million. Once we get farther along in design, we do some additional estimating and that sort of thing. So I'm here tonight to recommend that council adopt the resolution. And we get Aspect Consulting going on the design. For, and their cost for that was $75,791. And I'm here for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions before public comment? Hey, Donna, does anyone? She just knows.
Sir, apology went through to the process.
Yes, yes. So, the Department of Ecology has an interesting process, you know, where they review the cleanup plan, get back to the consultant. That was back and forth for a while. And then, then, then that draft plan is issued to the public for review. There's plans here and there was plans at the library also, which was real nice for the public to look at and review. And then they had an open house online to go over people's concerns and comments. And it was a really robust process that was run by the state.
I really want to thank you and those before you. The last six years, the last commission of the City of Shelton finally said enough was enough. of the City of Shelton finally said enough was enough, we're going to get this thing taken care of, and then this council has followed through with that. That has been a problem for 30 years and ignored by many for 30 years, and I really appreciate your work and people before you that started this. It's a long time overdue.
Yeah, I'm excited to get the plans done and get it to bid and be standing in front of you hopefully in the next six months or so with bid to award to actually close the thing out, get some fencing in, you know, get some soil down, some grass, and then we'll just mow it and maintain the property from here on out.
There is no public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right, can we have a reading of Resolution number 1220-1221?
Resolution number 1220-1121. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a professional services contract with Aspect Consulting LLC for environmental cleanup, construction planning for the C Street landfill.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution number 1220-1121 as presented.
A second.
All right. Any councilors have any comments or questions? Can you remind me of the date that it was supposed to be closed? Was it 40 years ago? Or I'm not what year that it was supposed to be closed?
Yeah, I have, from, from the report, I have 1980s, so it was mid-'80s of when it was closed.
So again, thank you for your work and those before you. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution number 1220-1221 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Jay, just thought I'd tell you, I used to go to that garbage dump with my dad when I was a little girl. So there's some memories out there. It'll be exciting to see that taken care of finally. No, in the 80s. Oh, thanks, Jeff. Yes.
Jeff, it was still, it was still being used when it was closed.
Oh, my gosh. What a nice guy.
All right. Thank, thank you, Jay.
You're welcome.
City manager, do you have a report for us?
I, I do, Mr. Mayor, a couple things to report. I don't even know if I have to use this thing, but I'm going to because it's sitting here. A couple things to report. First, I'm happy to report that the recycling of Christmas trees will start on Monday, the 10th, and run for most of the next week. They usually try to get most of the trees in the first couple of days in the week, but they'll run it through, through the week to make sure we can pick up as many as we possibly can. Councilmember McDowell already mentioned the legislative send-off. We talked a little bit about that before, so looking forward to meeting with our delegation on Friday morning to talk about priorities for the city that council has discussed several times. Let's see. We have, you will remember, some of you will remember, about 18 months ago, we entered into an agreement with surrounding municipalities for an emergency help agreement, particularly for Public Works things, if some major catastrophe was to happen, and in turn, we will help other cities if something was to happen to them, we'll send crews and those types of things. We've executed a similar agreement with Department of Transportation, State Department of Transportation. We had that agreement in place before, but the state had some new language on their end that they wanted us to, to agree to. We didn't have any problem with it, but I wanted to ensure council that were anything to happen. Hopefully not, but we are prepared and help is prepared to come should anything happen where we would need assistance. Another item which should be extremely happy about, I am, we all should be happy about, the Association of Washington Cities Retro Program, which is like their workers' kind of workplace safety program refunded $23,725 to the city, which will go back into our general fund because of our, our efforts on safety practices here and maintaining those and keeping that forefront in the culture of our organization, which is incredibly important. The last thing we want to see is somebody get hurt. And let's see, Mr. Luke Manning is wanting to mention here at this council meeting is our employee of the year for 2021. Will be, Luke and I will be doing an interview with iFiber on Thursday, and I'm not quite sure when that will air, but I'm assuming shortly after the interview takes place. Luke's amazing. I know you all know him or will know him shortly. The thing that stood out to all of us when we were talking about employees of the year for this year, or for last year, was we use the Civic Center as a cooling center for folks that did not have access to air conditioning during heat waves at the end of June. It was an important resource for the community. Luke helped make that happen, but we also had one of the HVAC units on the roof go out in the middle of that heat wave, and Luke was up on the roof when it was 112 degrees, working very hard to get that fixed. And those are the kind of things that are absolutely amazing, often go unnoticed, but I definitely wanted to recognize Luke for his efforts. So there is that. We'll be talking about committee assignments at your next meeting on the 18th during my weekly email update on Friday. I'll make sure to send out that list again. Heard back from a couple of you, I just want to make sure that council members are assigned to committees that have some interest for them. So please let me know which ones you are interested in. Several have already been, been spoken for, and I'll outline those when I send out the email on Friday. We'll talk about those on the 18th. And last but not least, you're looking ahead, agenda is part of your packet. On the 11th, we'll be talking about neighborhood residential zones via Zoom, so that, that meeting will be on Zoom again. A lot of work has gone into what is updated in your packet. The Development Code Committee has been working very hard, along with Director Mark Ziegler and the team in community development to streamline things, make things easier, more palatable, make the community create a unique sense of place for the city of Shelton. So we're happy to present that to you and then make sure we get feedback. On the 18th committees, as I mentioned, we'll also have a few different resolutions for the Safe Routes to School Contract that Councilmember Peterson mentioned a little bit earlier that was added to the PRPTO tip. There's a lot of acronyms, but we'll make sure that everybody understands what that, basically what that means is we're getting help to improve the safety for our citizens, financial help, and that's fantastic, and it's a direct result of our participation in the PRPTO. Let's see, looks like a relatively short agenda, but then one thing I did want to specifically call out, on the 25th, we have another study session planned, and that one is to discuss the downtown street trees. We do have a professional arborist report prepared, and we'll be sharing that with you and talking about options to make sure that those areas are as safe as we can make them.
They're rich for the.
Yeah, yeah. They have root barriers, all those types of things to make sure that what has happened at the moment does not happen 10, 15, 20 years from now because we are stewards for the city and make sure they're done, things are done right the first time if we can, and I'll help it, and that's what we're going to try to do here. And that's all I have. Yes, sir?
Yeah, thanks. Regarding the street tree discussion, I know that was part of the downtown visioning plan, and I know we've been touching on the components of that in the last several months, and I was just wondering if when we do that study session, if we can kind of dust that off and kind of re-review those recommendations, because that, again, was a, was a strong recommendation by that committee, and they put that together to institute a downtown street tree program.
Yeah, that has been incorporated, and we definitely want to recognize the hard work that all the folks on that committee put into, the thoughtfulness that they put into the downtown visioning plan, so that will be part of the discussion, absolutely.
Sounds great. Do we have any new items for discussion?
Not this, not this evening, Mr. Mayor, unless council has anything.
Excuse me?
Not this evening unless council has something.
Just a comment?
Yes.
Just want to say thanks to Public Works for working through the holiday and plowing snow for the last week and a half. I know it's been difficult to keep up with the snow and ice events, but you know, unfortunately, a few years ago, we looked at snow and ice as a nuisance, but now it's starting to be more of a regular thing, so I guess time to get used to it and try to figure out how to continue to operate when, when we have snow and we have only a finite amount of snow plows and resources, but I think it'd be good to take a look at that over the summer here and, you know, just see what we're equipped with and as we're developing the budget for 2023, with the fact that we're going to have 112 degrees in the summer and 10 degrees in the winter more regularly, I think it seems, so just making sure we have the right tools in the toolbox, but my appreciation of the crews for working on that.
Absolutely. Those crews were rotating on and off, working 24 hours a day, making sure particularly the hills and the primary emergency transportation routes were safe and open in case somebody needed to use.
Thanks.
I know the roads change, change fast. I mean, I was up at 4:30 this morning, Jeff, I let him know the roads were nice and wet this morning. I went to Hillcrest, I went to Bay Shore, I came back, town was icy. It's from an hour and a half, so it changed.
A comment. A week ago, week and a half ago, Jay took Miguel, Councilmember Miguel, myself on tour of the different. If anyone has not done that, I did it, I did it four years ago, I did it six years ago, I don't know, a couple times, and I learned something new every time, so it's very, very interesting to just get in the truck and you just drive around the different, different things that the city owns and the works, so very good.
Yeah, I'll be confirming another date for that for Jay tomorrow, so any other council members that weren't able to attend last time, we'll make sure you have an opportunity to attend again.
Last time I participated in a tour like that, the city manager drank some of the water out of the street.
Yes. And he drank, and he drank all the levels. He drank the lighter ones, the darker ones, I mean, he, he was our interim city manager. Right? Yeah, yeah.
Not happening.
He asked, he said, "No, you got to drink that water." He goes, "It's like a thing now." He goes, "No, no, thank you. I'll take the F." All right. Any other items for discussion? I just have a quick comment. I want to thank this, this first Shelton City Council and also welcome new council members. When the idea of the seven-person council came to light, I was skeptical of it. I said, I was thinking to myself, how could seven people go wrong and three people can't go wrong? But I want to say I was wrong. This council has worked so well together the last four years, they're getting stuff done. There's been no slamming and insulting and name-calling, and it's been a great four years to work with everybody here, and it's going to be a great four years to work for the rest of you. I'm looking forward to working with you on affordable housing and economic development, which we absolutely need to get done. You know, low-income housing, medium, high-priced homes, we need it all. We need businesses to come into town, because what's going to happen if we don't start using our land and developing and growing? Everybody who lives here is going to have to pay these higher rates, and they're going to get higher for water, sewer, infrastructure, and so we need people to come into town and help us. And also, I wouldn't mind having a few new neighbors. And I also want to thank past mayor Bob Rogers and Kevin Dorsey for their leadership and Deputy Mayor Peterson. It's been, it's been a really exciting four years, and we, you know, we inherited